It's under tab one. Tab one is like a. Welcome, you will have to do that.
You can push it up.
Thank you.
Sure, I can steal my pen. How are you?
How are you?
How you doing? Pretty pretty as always. What are you doing?
I work from the day to week at Longview.
Perfect.
Not people I like. Of my favorite people.
The quiet ones.
Hmm, who, how was it?
Huh?
How was John?
How's John?
John Law.
He's okay.
He got four people.
Well, he's back to work. He comes in and do that. Because he's been having the also.
Yeah.
He's been having twice a day, twice a week.
Yeah.
He has a month, he has take the ballers to the cream of the hour. I get after months and off, but. People want to do that yesterday. And I know you're all grown up, so. Got thirty seconds.
Don't say anything bad about me.
Pardon?
So I'm gonna turn the mics on, don't say anything bad about me.
Well, it's time to do it.
When the mics are on?
Yeah. Get it on record?
Wouldn't be the first time.
All right, welcome everyone to the Lincolnville Select Board meeting. It is August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. And before we get going, uh, the board just concluded an executive session regarding a poverty tax abatement through the poverty and or disability. And we need a motion.
I'm going to deny the poverty abatement pursuant to Title three six M R S A section eight four one two. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Very much. And also, we had a public hearing pursuant to Title seventeen M R S sections two eight five one through two eight five nine Dangerous Building. Is that Dangerous Building has been removed? There's no need to have the public hearing. So. Or if it doesn't have that kind of notice.
I got no official notice telling me not to be here.
Sorry, well, in case, in case somebody showed up or something like that, you know, that's why we had to, we had to have this conversation, had to have the.
That's true, but we've been official right along here.
And we appreciate it. And we very much appreciate it.
Not having the same appreciation back is kind of, you know.
At least it's gone. Yep. Yep, we appreciate that. And because you took care of it, didn't need to have the public hearing, so. Yeah. So thank you. All right. Awesome. And before we get the rest of the agenda rolling, uh, da, 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 da. Mike, what do you care?
No, I'm just gonna tell you, look at it. You got to make your own moves. You gotta drive yourself in. Octavia, welcome.
Thank you very much. And I'd open the citizens forum for any non-agenda items, but there's nobody here. So let's move on to the administrative report.
All right. For anybody that's watching, absentee ballots are available for the school budget validation vote. Here's the town office during normal business hours. Callwood Lane, we're at a standstill. We've had some weather issues. We've had some through COVID issues. We've had some scheduling issue. Blah, blah, blah. Uh, our contract doesn't, that work, our contract with the contract, it doesn't. Has deadline date, but it's later this fall. So it's ample time to continue to work. Maiden Cliff Road, um, we removed the pavement. The pavement had distressed to the point where it would have been impractical to overlay with the ruts that burn it. So we removed the pavement there. Did some ditching and we'll be repaving what was previously paved again here relatively shortly. Uh, let's see. Okay, we find, were those, were there culverts in that David? Involved in that too? Or?
No, there's culverts up above. I don't know if you did any culverts in the ditching, in the ditches or not.
Did some ditching.
That looks good.
I know they did some ditching, but I don't know if there were culverts, driveway culverts involved in that work. But they did not.
Okay.
It looked great.
Yeah. Sorry, I don't have the offline. Let's see. Oh, the down at the harbor, um, the main voice for DABIT. We have a new weather tight box that was constructed to keep the hydraulics and the hydraulic pump out of the weather. We put a new safety line over so if something happens to go overboard between the town floats and the ferry, there's new safety line in place. Fire extinguisher life ring and we have a spill prevent, not prevention, spill kit should there be a leak. On order should be arriving here shortly. A little disappointed that our mooring cleanup hasn't occurred yet, but the contractor apparently found something better to work for. Or more money or something, because they're not, they haven't been communicating, communicating well with us. Who's our contractor on that? Uh, Two Harbor's Marine. Our initial salt delivery for winter, whether or not arrived, we ordered it. Because we're about to commence relatively, well, I don't know, well, soon, but relatively soon. The stockpile of winter sand, so we have to, we supplied the salt and they mixed it and they bring the sand. So we wanted to get some here in the barn before, uh, before they arrived and it was crisis. We didn't have any. Take a couple names after you ordered it to arrive. Ball fields, um, the benches that were recommended by the infrastructure committee have been purchased and put together and are down on the soccer field. Fencing to come, we made contact with the fence repair people and we're on, we're in their queue. So hopefully that will be forthcoming. We're also going to work with the school staff on the lining of the soccer field. Because obviously if you don't keep lining it, it goes away and the school staff knows how to do it and where to do it. And we're going to attempt to have, uh, and we're not going to attempt, our public facilities director will be part of that relining. Hopefully we'll be able to incorporate some others from the recreation commission so that more than a few people know how to do it. Once they're done, once the initial lines are down, it's not as challenging to reline, but finding the pins to mark, to mark the corners apparently is quite tricky to get in the right spot to start. The fire station, perhaps you've noticed the field's been mowed and the roadside mowing is obviously done. And our Hardy Brook Crossing, we're anticipating proposals. We've taken a number of consultants out to the site to look, to give us, you know, educated design proposals and permitting for that crossing. We should have some sort of recommendation for here at the next meeting. So those are due next week. And let's see, I think that that's probably enough.
Any questions for David?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, when was it that the internet for the town office went down? Was that last week or I just wonder how it was?
Being doing that computer system?
Yeah.
The internet was working fine.
I'm sorry, it was the computers, but anyway, are we back up to where it's here being, are we healthy?
We, we. We are up and running.
Yep.
I, as you know, I'm not a tech genius by any stretch of imagination. My understanding is that within the server, there are like eight mini servers. I don't know if that's the right way to phrase it or drives or whatever. And the one that did almost everything at the front counter, um, wasn't functioning appropriately. And that has, we lived in long and then, um, our, a company that wishes perhaps to be our I T consultant, um, managed to fix that. Unfortunately, our I T person has passed, our previous I T person has passed. And so we're still in a little bit of a limbo land with some of our not superfluous, but less high priority things, like the harbor cam is still not working and, um, probably won't be for a while. But I believe that we are functioning appropriately and backing up and. Yes, it has been an interesting conversation with the consultants about, well, I can see how it's done, but I do it differently. And I think, you know, it's just like when, if I came to mow your lawn, I would mow it differently than you do. And somebody came to my house, they'd be like, who does this? They'd do it differently, you know? So, uh, at some point we'll have a recommendation on who and how to move forward. To the time anywhere.
Right.
Just happy you're working.
Thanks.
Yes.
That was gonna be, my question is, are the harbor cam issues related to the internet issues? Because I know there's been a lot of rumor and speculation about the harbor cam.
If I know little about the town office server, I know even less about the harbor cam and how that works. Part of the challenge, unfortunately, when we did the harbor cam, Dave Kenny didn't acquire enough knowledge from everybody about what they thought it ought to be able to do and its capabilities. So we set up a system that would lock screen what was happening down there. And then we wanted to have a, you know, be able to review back. So we got it set up to review back twenty-four hours. And there's more concern that it ought to be more like a security cam. So that transition was underway when the whole thing went down and the I T person went down with it. Unfortunately. So it's, we're gonna get there, but it's. Not as fast as I know everybody would like and believe me. I've light it up and running and reporting twenty-four seven, so people wouldn't have to, you know, remind me that it's not.
Yes. All right. All set on the administrator's report? All right. Let's move along to upcoming meetings and announcements.
Uh, all meetings are here at the town office unless announced otherwise. Planning board is scheduled to meet Wednesday, August fourteenth, six P M. The heart and soul team meets Thursday, August fifteenth, four P M. At the library. The comprehensive plan review committee meets Wednesday, August twenty-first, six thirty. Uh, there is a special town meeting to be conducted on Thursday, August twenty-second, from eight A M., excuse me, to eight P M. In the gymnasium of the Lincolnville Central School. The heart and soul team is going to have their community discussion on housing on Thursday, August twenty-second, six P M. At the community building. And the select board meets next on Monday, August twenty-sixth, six P M.
Thank you very much. Are there any upcoming community events anyone wishes to share? Seeing none, let's move along to the meeting minutes from the twenty-second of July.
The most important period of July is twenty-second, twenty-two and before meeting minutes as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And as we don't have a representative from the role by Anderson for the hawking and pedaling license review, I would entertain the first motion, please.
I'm going to table hawking and pedaling application until such time as a representative of the applicant. Any present to answer any questions?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Very much. And next before us, we have the N M A executive committee ballot and some qualified individuals therein. And if anyone cares to make a motion, they can go ahead.
Well, I move with the board cast itself, Justin Correa. For N M A vice president Davis here, Michael, the relic pool. And Matthew Garson, executive committee.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And David, do you wish to give our financial advisory committee?
Sure. The financial advisory committee met, I don't know, two weeks ago now. To the investment manager to go over performance and make sure we're still following policy and whatnot. Which we are following policy and we're performing, yeah. Pretty much keeping up with benchmarks. The committee had recorded back in, I can't remember if it was January or February, with some possible suggested changes to the allocations. And that didn't, I'd say didn't go any, but no changes were made. And so they said, they inquired about, you know, you think we could have a meeting with the board where we could just have the investment manager go over where we are and what the others in the world are doing and have some conversation that isn't in as formal a setting as this, so there could be some dialogue back and forth and the whole committee. And I said, if you think that's good, we'll put it on the agenda and they'll say sure and we'll have a conversation.
What's the board's thoughts?
It's awesome to me.
I'm like, they want to meet with us.
Yeah, it's a great idea. Be happy to. I would advocate, um, or October to myself.
Yes.
Personally, I'd rather do September just because the budget committee for the county accepts September twentieth. But I can't, I cannot do the sixteenth, that's for sure.
October's best for me.
I'm fine with that.
Thirty, almost sounds like October.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, I'll, 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 so whenever you schedule.
Listen, I could do the thirtieth or the seventh, I guess, although it would be.
Like, best for me, we all, all the dates should be the thirtieth or the twenty-first.
Okay.
So thirtieth?
I would do my best to be flexible.
Yeah, I'll be there. Yeah, with your schedule.
I deal with my people.
So ten, when we say the thirtieth?
Yeah.
What time works best for the board? I think they, they're flexible.
Five?
Five or six.
Yeah. Five or six?
Five or six.
Okay. Great, good deal. We can densify.
There we go.
And the McGonagall watershed, possible meeting with Camden officials. Well.
Um, we're going to have to do the last sentence in number ten. The heart and soul team and the review committee also suggested.
They don't have a date, so like, did I?
Oh, so we don't give them suggestions.
I, I mean.
Do you wanna pick, you wanna pick one and tell?
From now until when?
Well, they, they.
Well, I suggested October. How about the twenty-first? Sure.
Put a time to that one? Five or six or three?
Let's say five.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And moving along, um, so what did you all think of the email chain back and forth between, the committee and the select board and David? And I, I was C C'd in on some of these and then read the other ones that weren't C C'd to me, so. I'm a little confused. The why is and wherefore is?
And we, and we're in the middle of, no, they don't have, they're gonna have a new chairman.
Yeah.
So.
It's almost like this. Their select board has charged the committee and let them run, go do their thing, it sounds like. And you had all proposed meeting together because that would get everybody in the room at one time and maybe save some effort. It might do us well just to say we recognize within your committee's charge that you're looking for stakeholders within the watershed, not just the river, but the watershed itself and.
We are, we are the watershed.
We have the biggest portion of the watershed within our community and, you know, if you want or not, but like, if you do, maybe when, when time's right for you, we're here and ready and willing. And all needs to include the select board, not just the committee.
Yeah. I mean, that's what sort of upset me is that.
Yeah.
Having one set of policy setters, meeting with a committee seems.
No.
Yeah, so. Well, it's, it sounds, I mean, I, I like that suggestion in the form of a letter and a response, but, you know, as their select board and their committee has, has stated that we, we are the watershed, we're a good, good majority of the watershed and so we look forward to them reaching out as their mission is stated and we'll be happy to participate.
Is the purpose of our participation to just hear their solutions? I didn't think so. I thought we were trying to be more of a collaborative workshop thing. I mean, it sounds like the most recent thing Camden is saying that they want to wait for the committee to come up with their solutions.
Yeah.
And then they will share them, which is not what we were asking for.
Right.
Well, I look at it, they, they published that they've involved us. They haven't involved us. So let's sit at the table and tie, I mean, we, 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 we gotta go with something in the back of our head, but, but, uh, you know, one of the things they're considering, have they, have they even considered how the impact is to the Lincolnville watershed?
Yeah.
To the upstream, uh, et cetera. But they need to honor what they, we're sitting at the table to be included. I think we have pretty much to the table.
If the select board doesn't want to be part of the solution, so I mean, that also to me is what they're saying. It's like, we, like you said, we've delegated this to this committee and we await their solutions. Then maybe we should go back to that kind of very first one, but then it all, he's like, yeah, we do. I mean, we should just do that.
Well, would it?
No.
Do you say? What about, what about inviting a representative from their group to come and present to the board what they have done thus far and have an opportunity for all of our members here to ask them any number of pointed questions of, so what is your formal mechanism? I would love to ask what the formal mechanism that you intend on including and incorporating, you know, parts of the watershed.
I would appreciate that when we get, like, type of conversation, we get things going, I hope. Yeah, hopefully keeps our, a wider discussion.
Yeah, because, because otherwise I feel, as you said, Steve, I feel uncomfortable having a board collaborate with a committee or factions, oh, oh, here. You know, I'd much rather meet with the policy setters in Camden ultimately to say, okay, well, what's the plan and how is it?
So put it forth as a two-pronged approach. Approach one, let's have your committee come present to us at one of our regular meetings and at a subsequent date, our boards can meet to discuss this and potentially other topics.
Yep. Yeah, that, that.
Appropriate.
Sound good to everybody else?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it, Dave?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. And so we had asked to have some follow-up regarding firefighter wage adjustment and pay frequency and that came today. So I haven't even had a chance to read it.
I'm gonna say even if you read it, you're, I am gonna call and get some clarification from Paige, even what it says when she wrote it. I believe I understand that, I almost think you ought to just give a phone call conversation with her.
Well, that was my question is that, you know, there's, not that it's a sensitive conversation, but it's, i- is this something that we can all sit around the table on the phone with legal and, and parse of it, just in reading over this quickly, I still am not clear.
Yeah, I'm closer, but I'm not.
Closer, but it's, I don't feel resolute in my, you know, what we can offer a fire chief as a solution. So is that something that we could do at a forthcoming meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll just catch over there.
I think that that would be valuable.
I get closer and then I'm like, okay, the twenty percent, we're under that. And as long as, as long as we.
But it's all hedged potentially.
It's in the event of.
Nominal, the minute.
They don't use the term hourly.
The minute you, you trigger or even if behind the scenes you actually do something that involves an hour, you're, you've created that employee, one employee, employer relationship and you're not comfortable.
Okay.
Is my understanding, but.
Yeah, I would like to parse that out and, and walk away from the conversation with a very clear directive of what we can or cannot do and how we move forward. Yeah.
So it was the change of words. Well, you can, how would we pay before it was just a per call?
Right.
But even that was, and nobody had a problem.
Well, no, that.
Well, they had a problem because they were getting paid fifty, whatever minimum wage was per, per call. So that was, the, the nominal fee was fifteen bucks or eighteen dollars or twenty or whatever minimum wage was.
Right.
But the proposal that came to the board and the budget committee in town meeting.
Yeah.
Was we want to pay people per hour, eighteen dollars an hour for call and training. And it's the hourly word and calculation that triggers all sorts of employer, employee.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's where we, as the board, get stuck in really difficult places. We can't.
So if we went back to, we just said twenty-five bucks per call. First person. Mm-hmm, what's wrong with that? If you had a ten-hour call and people are anticipating getting the equivalent of eighteen dollars an hour, they get twenty-five bucks. Well.
Yeah.
That's, so. I mean, it was, it was, it was presented as a recruitment and retention tool.
Yeah.
And also as a motivator to show up.
And comparable to other communities, what they now do it.
Right. And so if you, um, you know, if you start, and this will be a question for council, I guess, is if you, well, follows up on what Steve asked, and I tried to ask him, I, you know, you find it in there somewhere, about can you make different people doing the same job, nominal fees different?
Aren't we discussing all of this because we didn't want, we can't be paying on a quarterly basis? We were talking about, and it isn't even started this whole thing, that you do is.
Right, but if you get paid a nominal fee, apparently you can be paid on a different basis than every two weeks.
But the issue is, is what the voters approve, what was asked for, what the voters approved, and then what we said, go ahead. That's, that's the whole problem here and.
But if we just figured out a way to incorporate that admin work into the payroll section. But if we just figured out a way to incorporate that admin work into the payroll section, we wouldn't have this problem, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
So at what point do we just say, I mean, how much are we gonna spend on our lawyers trying to figure this out until we just say, sorry, we didn't earn a shot, that's just, we're just gonna have to do paperwork every call, or, you know. I guess I'm wondering if we're not trying to engineer a huge solution to something that maybe isn't worth engineering.
I think one more brief phone call is worth the
Yeah.
Worth the discussion, and I think we'll be pretty clear walking out of that.
And I think, and I think it'll, maybe it may benefit neighboring communities too, who sound like they're
They're skirting.
Skirting, you know?
Yeah.
So I, I think, I agree with you, I think that there's, there will be value in having one more conversation to really clarify what, and also just for my own benefit of being able to absorb what's been presented here this evening and and be resolved in, at least my portion of the conversation, yeah.
And who is this conversation with?
Okay, should I take it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, from Jensen Baird.
Okay.
I'm okay. Did everybody?
Yeah, I think that we have the follow-up.
All right, super. Thank you, everyone. Uh, and moving along, um, looking through the remote and hybrid meeting policy, um, there's a lot to straighten out in here, but also just wanna call out to, um, the method of, um, letting us know if you're gonna need to meet remotely, um, so that either David or I don't drop the ball. That's what it comes down to. Um, because there definitely have been a couple of instances where it was like, oh, hey, and I, you know, I'm already thinking about five different things, so I think giving notice and writing will be really helpful if, um, if a meeting can't be attended, and then otherwise it's just cleaning up all of the board of selectmen to select board, and then David and I had a conversation under section four, it was just cleaning up the language, so.
I have a couple of just spots for if I've ever seen a review. Section three, A2, which is the back of the first page. Because if...
Section three, A2, I'm there.
Yeah, the hybrid meetings with remote participation by individual members. Um, I just wondered, I mean, the old quorum also was a little clunky, but except for a remote meeting being conducted consistent with this policy. It used to say board of selectmen are expected to be physically present, which isn't, and we're changing that to select board, but shouldn't it be all members of for a quorum of the select board? Should it be, instead of just, except for blah blah blah, this policy, select board are expected to be
Select board members.
Yeah, we're select board members, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So the word members there.
Mm-hmm.
And the only other one I had was on the back of the next page, which is section D, disruptions in adjournment, kind of halfway down the page, where it says, um, if the meeting being conducted, this is, this is just before the second of the three, um, I just think the word members needs to be in there then.
The meeting flow.
Yeah, with no remote participation by individual select board and a remote connection, so individual select board members. Yeah, that's all.
My eyes were totally going across, and then I handed it over to David. I was like, David, you're gonna have to look at this because I've looked at board of selectmen and select board so many times that I just can't, it's not ma, it's not English to me anymore. Um, okay, so with those, I did actually, one more question, sorry. Back to that other page, that's section two, the two things in brackets, are those, are you adding those?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
But what does alternative colon and during business hours?
So that's optional language.
Optional, or what, for the words as is possible?
To, as is possible during business hours.
Oh, gotcha.
So that, that would, yes, I would like for the board to weigh in on that, only because, um, as is, to the extent possible, it makes it a lot easier for town office staff to send out the Zoom links and set up all the things and do the things, and if that happens during the business hours, it makes it a lot easier so that someone isn't coming in on a weekend to try to set that up, and it also keeps us more in compliance with fair notice to the public that that's happening also. So, so the language would be, um, as is possible and during business hours.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, not, not alternative, I should have like put that in its own brackets or some, I don't know.
Yeah, and then in writing.
Yeah.
Okay, does in writing include email?
Yes, yeah. Send duplicate by passenger pigeon, yeah.
Um, so would someone care to?
One other question, I know it came up in our neighboring town recently. Who's in, if the chair of the board or a committee is remote, who runs the meeting?
So what we did in the past, and I believe what the council was, was to have the chair open the meeting and then have consensus from the group at the vice or whoever down the chain
Right.
who is present and can, you know, is either running the meeting or in either of those acts.
Maybe I went, is that in here or is that just?
It isn't, it isn't in here, no, um...
Doesn't need to be.
That's what I was wondering, because I know it came up in our neighboring community recently
Yeah.
on this whole topic, and it's like, ah, should we cover that enough?
Yeah, that, that is a good point, I mean, because it's hard, because it's not, the, what this is, Sally Dackett had drafted this.
Yeah.
And so my attempt was to change things as minimally as possible so that it remains in compliance with the statute. Um, and so adding things that are not, not that were prohibited from, but that's the tricky thing about boards and committees, right, is that they're kind of only run as well as the members that make them up. Um, and so I don't, I guess, I don't know, David, can we lob that to you for your perspective of inclusion of, of that concept?
Well, uh, maybe, I just, I hope a definite maybe.
Absolutely.
You know, the, the policy covers both remote and hybrid meetings.
Right.
So if you're all remote, back in the day, then the chair's gonna run, and if you're not, you know, conceivably, if the group agreed, the chair could still run the meeting, you know, I'm thinking,
Yeah.
who, who meets this way? Lateshun Ponce, for a while, was quite frequently be, meeting hybrid. And I think Gary was here to run the meetings, but I'm gonna venture, if he wasn't there, they still would have wanted him to run the meetings. You know, I think it's, it's more for if, like in this setting, if the chair was absent, was remote, and we had a crowd for once, or ever, um, you know, it might be handy to have somebody here that had eyes on the crowd, because it's real hard to see on that screen what everybody's doing. I'm of the mindset that the group ought to be able to set their own policy depending on the circumstance they're in, and if it's not working, if the chair here is on the screen, and you have to keep saying, hey, you know, Jimmy's gonna stand up, maybe then the chair would be frightened not to say, hey, why doesn't the vice chair run the, you know,
Yeah.
that portion of that, but that's me.
I'm fine with that, I just wanted to oppose the, the question, because they...
I mean, I feel like sort of logic presents that someone who's in the room be able to see everybody, but...
Yeah.
But good point, um, okay, so would someone be willing to make that motion with, whoops, noting amendment?
As amended.
As amended.
I moved the board adopt the amended remote and hybrid meeting policy.
As amended.
Proposed and amended.
Beautiful, moved and seconded, uh, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, thank you very much. And before we can move on with agenda item number 14, we first need a motion.
I move that the board, or in place, I move we suspend our meeting as the select board and that we convene as the board assessors.
Um, did seconded any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Uh, David, do you want to speak to this?
Uh, yeah, apparently the Bay Meadows LLC approached the assessors' agent regarding their property that they were assessed for 13 acres when they had seven in Trigro, and Vern said, you're absolutely right, and that gave them a payment amount of $21.97, so this corrects an error on the record.
Uh, would someone care to make a motion?
Well, I move that the board proven sign of Bay Meadows LLC, the tax on it $21.97.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and before moving on, we need to find a motion there.
I move that we adjourn our meeting as the board assessors reconvene as this one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And David, would you care to talk on Calderwood Lane?
So Calderwood Lane, it will probably be the best constructed road in the town of Louisville when we're done, maybe even rival Route One. Uh, but the challenge being currently one of the property owners is having a large quantity of fill brought in from Route One project that's going on in Spring Grove, um, which is advantageous to, certainly to the property owner, and the contractor is more than willing to stop when we tell him to stop. Hauling that material in and out, they have alternative sites, but it's very beneficial to a Lincolnville property owner as well as, um, the contractor, so in terms of the state. Um, that being said, if somebody wanted to throw the switch to a different spot down that road after we grade it and pave it, and the pavement hasn't had an adequate period to set, I mean, it will be compacted like you do, but you start turning on hot pavement in the middle of summer, and no matter how many times you rolled it, it's gonna cause problems. And we'd like to avoid that, possible, after investing $600,000 on the road. Uh, so the suggestion that Public Facilities and I came, director came up with would be to permanently post it, and then if it needs to be revisited after, you know, winter or two of cold weather and pavement that becomes sort of soft and pliable, becomes brittle, um, it would be fine, you know? If you were to drive the same trucks over this three years from now, probably wouldn't have a care in the world, but in the next eight weeks, I don't wanna, I don't wanna spend that kind of money and live the consequences.
Seems like a totally reasonable protection on our investment.
I have a concern with the word permanently. Even though we revisit it if we need, needed to, once we do it, we're not gonna come back to it until, and now we've got what we just said is the best constructed road in town, having a restriction on it and other roads don't. So that's my only concern there. If we say it's rest of this year or until summer, or whatever, or whatever we feel is reasonable, I think...
Could, could we put in, you know, be...
I think you could put a, for lack of a better word, sunset provision in there, call it permanent with an end date, because the ordinance talks about permanently or seasonally. And seasonally is, you know, mud season.
Yeah.
That's when we're, that's the season we're doing that. With this being, you know, we at least want to get through summer and fall.
Right.
If it's frozen in the winter.
So permanent is in...
I think those are your two options.
To remain in compliance.
Permanent per this, but I think, yeah, so it's, but it, to me, we have to put a a sunset date on that or something, just to be...
Well, should we put that in the motion though?
Seasonally is, gets put in X.
Well, but the ordinance, the ordinance...
That's already in the ordinance.
Yeah, the ordinance is, so, so we want to, we want to remain consistent with what the ordinance allows us to do, but I guess my question is, is that, you know, be permanently with a sunset clause, or do you think we need...
Or to be reevalu, could you do it where we reeval, forces us to reevaluate this?
Yeah.
Next...
A year from, or whatever, next whatever, you name a date.
Would you care to make that motion?
What's the date gonna be?
A year from October, didn't you say they should be done by the end of October?
Well, will be done, and then the contractor will be done.
Wouldn't, wouldn't springtime be a reasonable?
Time to reevaluate it.
Sure. You pick a date, we'll, I'll put a tickler in my phone and it'll remind me, put it on your desk.
Let's say May 1st, you know, after crossing the ground or something.
Pursuant to the restricting vehicle weight posted ways ordinance that the Calderwood Lane be permanently posted to the 10-ton gross registered weight limit to be evaluated by May 1st, 2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And updates, Karen, do you have an update for us?
No, I don't.
Neither do I.
See?
I do have one, um, just that there has been communication now for the LCS facilities committee, um, the members, which appear to be Alden Minor, Justin Bennett, Seth Anderson, somebody in the first name Lauren, and myself.
Okay.
And we haven't had a first date meeting scheduled yet, but we're playing email tag to make that happen.
Okay, great.
Is the... Principal, don't have it?
Yes.
Yeah, that's...
Yep. And, and, okay, I forgot.
The gym roof looks odd on the roadside where the seams overlap, and I don't know if it's just me looking for problems, but if someone could take a look at that. Each seam looks, from the ground, looks where they come together, uh, down to the, uh, the line where a guy most nominally would be, looks like they're lifting, they're a different color, and that's a, that is a rubber, you know, rubber, what do they call it?
Membrage?
A membrane, that's a membrane.
Yeah.
Epi.
So I, I just wanted to mention that. Pretty...
EPDI.
Yeah.
EPDI.
Good update.
Um, so if anybody noticed on the Lincolnville bulletin board, probably weeks ago, DNA had posted that they were having a demonstration of their harvest right freeze dryer that's at the DNA office.
I did do an offer in the freeze dryer, a free freeze dryer, you know?
I have got my freeze dryer, yeah, and I got an email today saying my chicken soup is ready.
Oh, my God.
They were showing us part of it, they were in the process of doing it, but they were like, you can even freeze dry soup. And so, yeah, but anyway, um, so that was a very interesting thing. The unit that they have is fairly small, and I couldn't necessarily see a use for that with us, but then a week later, um, in the main farmland trust newsletter that I get, there was a thing about grant opportunities from the USDA, fully funded grant opportunity, 100%, um, for getting, look at how mid-cycle equipment to help with agriculture, and a freeze dryer fits as middle of the cycle. And a freeze dryer fits as middle of the cycle, it's, it's past harvesting, it's before settling and packaging. And, um, also what would fit in there is a blueberry winnow machine, is also mid-cycle, and long story short, I went to, I signed up for their open office hours to get more information about it, and we could as a town, um, apply for a grant to get something like this, the school can apply for a grant to, to get something like this, the school seems like from the office hours has more latitude, because like we couldn't get it, this also was because we just had this meeting in Town Agriculture for Heart and Soul. Um, and a bunch of farmers were together from people, you know, running farms commercially in town and saying how they'd love to have more output for their products, they like, you know, something, they were talking about trying to create an equipment and tool library for mutual sharing of, of bigger, especially bigger ticket equipment items, and so that, you know, the farms could all operate better. They were looking at, oh, we could have maybe some local farmer's market, you know, where everything could be being sold in one place instead of everybody having to run their own thing, lots of these ideas, and the food dehydrating, freeze drying, um, is an option that could be available for an organization like that. Um, so, again, and also then there was a school, um, garden that they do, and the woman that runs the cafeteria, you know, does a great job of trying to use as much local stuff, our problem is our garden raises stuff that, you know, that's not during the school year when a lot of that's happening. Um, so if the school chose to do this, they could have a freeze drying capability for a lot of things, especially things like squashes and stuff like that, you know. That could give them a lot more produce to use in the year, it could also, Walden County Bounty was interested in the idea of, um, with those excess from farms, whatever, that, that it could be freeze dried and, you know, um, and the school, if the school got the grant, it's, uh, they can set up a collaborative thing with the individual gardeners in town who might want to be using something like this, you know. Like a borrowed book at the library, borrow time to use this for their nominal fee, and, um, anyway, I just wanted to mention, I'm still looking at it. Um, to see if it's something that could work with anything here, and I reached out to a school committee member, did an initial feeling from them. And that's where it's just very, you know, um, and then the other thing was, I went to Camden Yacht Club, had a presentation last Thursday about, uh, an ongoing two-year project going on in Camden Harbor, that you might be aware of for, uh, looking at storm surge and in Bay, they have a couple of buoys out there and they had very timely information in place, happened for last December with that December eighteenth storm, and then one of the buoys failed, but they still had data from the other ones for the January storms, and, um, they've built a model that's fairly predictive, um, that might be of use for us. Um, as we go forward, looking at whatever we need to do down the, making the haul.
Awesome, interesting, thank you. Uh, and I have no updates. Uh, okay, and we have the treasure and payroll warrants to approve and sign.
I'll vote approve and sign the treasures and payroll warrants.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Very much. And if there's no other business the board wishes to attend to, I will entertain a final motion. I move that we adjourn.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, and any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
I have to go down to my office, I have things for you to sign, I'll come right back.
Okay.
Okay, and we have our meeting August twenty-nine, right, the A O T.
Yep.
Yes, the public meeting, yes, not our meeting, not our meeting, there is true. But it's at our school.